To call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Village Attorney Sarafan?
Still present.
Village Manager Benton?
Here.
Councilman Brady?
Here.
Councilman LaFredo?
Here.
Councilman Mouts?
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Present.
Mayor Wagler?
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Move on to presentations.
The Historic Preservation Board Chair, it has not arrived. And I don't see the Education Advisory Board Chair here either. They may be arriving a little bit later. I don't know if the council would like to move to public comments in the interim.
We'll give them a chance to get here. Move on to public comments. If there's anyone here that would like to make public comment, please head to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone who wishes to make public comment at this time? Okay, no one's coming to the podium, so public comment is now closed.
If it's a pleasure of the council, we can move on to the consent agenda, since the titles are a little lengthy this time on the agenda. Items are routine, self-explanatory matters, are not expected to require discussion or review, items will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by any member of the council, the item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If the public wishes to speak on a matter on the consent agenda, they must inform the village clerk prior to the start of the meeting. They will be recognized to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Item 6A, approval of the September 3, 2019 first budget hearing minutes. Item 6B, approval of the September 3, 2019 village council meeting minutes. Item 6C, a resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, creating budget amendment number four to the fiscal year 2018-2019, operating budgets transferring $183,179 from the general fund to the Brockway Memorial Expansion Fund for the Brockway Memorial.
Yes, Councilman LaFredo?
Yeah, to stop it at this point, I'm going to be asking that 6C, D, and E be taken off the consent agenda so the village manager can make a brief presentation on the topic. So rather than make the village start reading twice, I'd ask that we approve the minutes and then sort of people at home and the people in the audience can hear what we're doing because if there's some substantial numbers.
So you're moving 6A and 6B?
I'm moving 6A and 6B with the understanding that C, D, and E are off.
Do I have a motion to approve 6A and item 6B?
Yes.
Oh, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, creating budget amendment number four to the fiscal year 2018-2019, operating budgets transferring $183,179 from the general fund to the Brockway Memorial Expansion Fund for the Brockway Memorial Library Expansion Project. Staff on this item is the Finance Director, the Library Director, and the Village Manager.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Yes, ma'am. So I have previously provided the council with a memorandum dated January the 29th, 2019, that basically outlined where we got this $183,179. Essentially what that is, is we are, the council has approved an expansion on the north side of the Brockway Library. We went out to bid, the bids came in at higher than the budgeted amount, and so we had to reappropriate an additional $183,000, $183,179 from our fund balance account in order to ensure that we had enough funding to complete this addition as planned.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yes, I'd like to-
Councilman LaFredo?
Just for the benefit of the people present, a little personal anecdote on the library and the need for this addition. My wife took the grandbaby last Tuesday for storytime at 10:30 and arrived at 10:30 and was told she didn't make it. She didn't make the cut. They said she had to get there at 10 o'clock for a 10:30 storytime. My wife wasn't upset, but there were, they capped it at 20, and it's very popular. They have programs at the library that are very popular, and so she held the baby at the window, and the baby was happy. She could see all the stuff they did. I'm just saying, this is, this facility gets a lot of use, it's in a lot of demand, there's been a lot of effort to put this addition in place, and I'm in favor of the addition.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I have a motion to move item 6C?
I'd move that we approve item 6C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Item 6D, a resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, creating budget amendment number five to the fiscal year 2018-2019, operating budgets, appropriating $96,992 from the general fund balance, supporting the implementation of a school-wide Cambridge International Curriculum Program and an I-Prep 5th grade program at Miami Shores Elementary School.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. This is the, as the clerks indicated, this is the necessary funding that the council approved for the Cambridge program in Miami Shores Elementary. These are funds that have been spent already. Our Finance Director, Ms. Hugdahl, is just moving the money around to get them in the proper place within the budget. So we have signed the contract, we have sent the money, and Cambridge is being taught now at Miami Shores Elementary. And this is the dollar amount that the council agreed to, and of which we remitted payment to Dade County Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. LaFredo?
Yes, I, I just want to think that this is a very important program, and I'm glad the manager explained that it's already underway, and this is simply a transfer to fund what we've already expended, and I'd move approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Item 6C, a resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, approving the Miami Shores Village Title VI Non-Discrimination Policy and Plan for Subrecipients in the Florida Department of Transportation Local Agency Program in accordance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, we have applied for a local agency program grant through the Florida Department of Transportation, the, and it'll appear later on in the agenda as well, the actual contract, if you will. Every three years, we're required through DOT to redo this. It basically is a policy that we've had in place since, I guess, since the, the Act was approved in 1964. So we have to redo this for the Florida Department of Transportation every so many years. This is their exact language here that, that they provided to us. Mr. Sarafan, I believe, has reviewed this for legal sufficiency. The only thing that was added is, is basically the contact name, which is Mr. Davis in here, and a couple of the little small fill-in-the-blanks, but the actual wording came from FDOT, and we need to do this in order to get our funding for this project. In fact, we've got three other grants in the pipeline. This one that, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit, that, that will come later on in the agenda, is for the bikeway and walkway from Bear University to 103rd Street. So this is just a, this is something that we have to do periodically.
Thank you. Mr. LaFredo?
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I, I think that this doesn't limit us, we can be a little more broader in our anti-discrimination, but I would move approval.
I do have a comment before we do that. Mr. Davis, in this document, I read it, and you're in charge of a lot of housekeeping in this, and I just wondered what kind of training you received in order to implement this within your purview.
So in order to become lab certified, we, my Assistant Director and myself, Chris Miranda, and I have gone through extensive training on the requirements of what the state requires in order for us to spend and administer their money. A good part of it is how not to discriminate, what happens if someone feels like you have discriminated, and what their relief is. And so I am the contact for the public if they feel that they have been discriminated against, and it's up to me to try and resolve it. And if I can't resolve it, then it goes to the Department of Transportation for their possible resolution.
Do you have the sole discretion to try to resolve it within, do you have the sole discretion to try to resolve it within the bounds of what, how you were trained and don't?
Within the village, sole discretion requires any approval from the city manager. So we work under the direction of the city manager and-
Right, but, but comes to you for review?
Yes.
And then you're, you're going to be the one making the decision if there was some discrimination?
That's correct. And, and pretty much with regard to construction of this multi-use pathway, or how the pathway's going to work, where it's going to be very hard to discriminate in that case. So it would be someone who feels that they're discriminated against, and I would have to resolve it with them and explain possibly how they weren't discriminated against.
This has to do with discrimination in the use of the facilities. You know, I guess it's one thing if you've got a bus and you have to decide who to let on or not let on, but it's a pathway, you know?
I understand, I just- I just want a clarification.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Well, there's-
But I do work under the direction of the city manager and-
I understand who you work for, I was just looking for clarification on what qualifications FDOT may have provided you through training to-
We have gone through extensive training.
That's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I just thought that since we pulled this item, I wanted to thank Mr. Davis, because back in 2009, when the charter school sidewalk was built, we took federal dollars at that time, but we took it through our contractor. The contractor was lab certified, and at that time, that was okay. Now you need to be, as a city, lab certified. So it is a process, and I want to thank you for going through that and, and getting us to this point, because we have other grants in the pipeline, as the manager said, about which I am very excited. And I know that, that it's been a long time coming. This grant was originally, we got the letter about this grant in 2015, that it was approved. So now we're finally getting through the process, and it's a long process, just like a lot of government processes, but I want to thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for acknowledging that. Our Assistant Director, Chris Miranda, has worked very hard on this, along with myself, and I want to acknowledge the work that he's done.
And I want to describe, the, this is a shared use path, that is the official name of it, and it was one of the first recommendations in our multimodal mobility study that we did in 2015. And I'm, I'm very pleased to be able to get to the point where we have, this, when this is completed, it will be one of the first shared use pathways in North Dade County. And so we're, I feel pretty special about that, and especially if it brings the Berry students safely down from 115th Street to 103rd and 2nd Avenue. And so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. LaFredo?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just a couple of points. I think it's a great accomplishment, especially by the Assistant Director getting as far as he's gotten with it. But if you're going to have a very successful program with lots of people using this path, plus the adjoining homeowners, I think we need to administer it with a certain sensitivity, because there may be conflicts, especially with the new use that has never been there before. I'm not saying any, I'm not saying something bad's going to happen, but I just think we should administer it with a certain sensitivity.
Acknowledged.
Any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move. Okay, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, thank you. Madam Clerk, I see that the gentleman representing Education Advisory Board is here.
That was correct.
Shall we go back to presentations?
Sorry if I'm late, I thought we were going to start around 6:30.
You're not late.
You're not late?
No.
I'm not late, okay.
Can you state your name and, name and address for the record?
Sure, Antonio Natto, I'm on 9250 Northeast 10th Court. And I'm here to present the annual report for the Education Board. So we just finished our first year as a board, and I just wanted to start with the board members here. So we have a group of seven people, Tiffany, Sylvia, Leslie, Doug, Daniel, myself, Dana, Patricia, and then of course, Isabelle helps us in every meeting. We have a few members here, yeah, this one. So, so basically getting started here, I just want to, I'm sure everybody knows about this, but just, you know, from us here, in front of everybody, that we're, we increased the grade, I mean, we as a community, kids, parents, staff of the school, everybody, so we should, I guess we all deserve a round of applause here for, you know, getting the B this year. So, for those of you who don't know, the school had a C the previous year, so now the school's a B, and we're working, of course, to get an A this coming year, okay? So we're very proud of that. Moving forward, just to show you guys the object, the main objectives of the board, so what we are working on. So starting with the implementation of the educational compact, right, by the school district, then of course, driving the school to obtain and sustain an A grade, driving, I think this is a very important one, driving involvement and engagement between the community and the school. I think that's something that, it's very critical for, you know, for the school to continue to improve, that we have everybody involved and engaged. And then, of course, the final result of this work is to increase the attendance from Miami Shores residents to our school, okay? So this is what we're focusing on. Questions? No? Among other things, we chose three main things that we worked on the last year. First one was the survey. So we did a survey in the, in the city to, you know, get information as, to decide what we're going to focus on, what the strategy of the board was going to be. So that was what we started with. Then, moving on to the second point, we were able to get donations to the school on a nice amount of $5,000, mostly office supplies, starting from, you know, just staplers, all the way up to Xerox workstations, copiers, scanners, and all that. And then the final topic, which is something the village manager just mentioned, you know, supporting the village and the school district to approve the Cambridge program, which is something we're starting to work on, okay? Activities in progress and upcoming events. So I think, I think it was also mentioned by the manager, the grant, that we're also working on. So it's something that we want to match the Cambridge program, so another $97,000 towards the school, something that we're working with the principal and the community to get it done. So hopefully we'll, we'll be able to announce that soon. We're going to hold a breakfast for the teachers and the staff to celebrate the new grade B, and I would like to invite all of you to do that breakfast. We don't have a date yet, we're waiting from the principal to come up with the best date to do that event. So I'll let you guys know, maybe through Isabelle, when that's going to happen, and you guys are all invited to help us celebrate with the teachers and staff. Then the next point is to continue developing a methodology to help you and us track the implementation of the Cambridge program, right? We all heard here how it's going to be implemented, but it's, there's some intangibles that we want to bring more, you know, tangibility to, so that we can understand how it progresses and how the money is being spent in this program, okay? And then, of course, the, again, this point to continue to drive engagement between the school and the community. I think this is key, and I think, you know, one of the things that we're going to be working more and more is also to reach out to the school district in downtown, participating in those meetings, so that, you know, they start to hear from us more often, and then, of course, start to allocate resources to us more than they're doing today, okay? So I just mentioned, you know, this is, this one recommendation here, which is actually what I just said, you know? If you guys can also participate in, you know, joining the community and the board in meetings downtown, it's always going to bring more relevance to our school, to our community, and, you know, good things are going to continue to happen, and hopefully we'll reach the grade A sooner than what we are expecting, okay? Questions? Yes?
If you want participation, well, first of all, count me in for the breakfast, but if you want participation by some of us coming down, can I give you my email address after the end of the meeting, and I'll just come whenever you ask me to come?
You mean for any-
For the school board, or whatever you want me to do.
Okay, sure.
I love yelling at them. I used to do it 30 years ago. Now I won't do anything out, I just show up.
All right, come, come for that.
I just want to say thank you, Antonio, for your hard work. I know that you guys have been working hard to move these items along and working hard with Miami Shores Elementary, and I appreciate it, and I've heard positive things coming out of the school. I've had several meetings over there last week, so just want to thank you and just continue, and, you know, I'll be at the school board as well-
All right.
-when you need me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Sir, I also just wanted to thank you and to, you know, for, it's a lot of progress to be in a short amount of time. I absolutely appreciate the engagement, and that as far as the increasing the attendance of residents, I'm now up to two kids at Miami Shores Elementary, so, yes, we got a very last-minute notification that there was an open spot in the pre-K, so my daughter's over there now as well, and they're, they both have been very, very excited with everything at the school this year, so thank you.
Yeah, we don't have official numbers, you know, of any increase yet on the, on the attendance, but we do know that there is definitely more interest. They're holding now tours every Tuesdays, so that's going to also help, you know, the village and anybody who's interested to, you know, be closer to the school, learn more about it, and then finally join it. So, so there is more interest already, which is good.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes, Antonio, I think this presentation has helped me a lot to, to see what exactly you're doing in addition to the obvious ones that we know, so I thank you for the, the presentation and putting this together, and I, I just wish you all the best in your work, and I'm very impressed with how much you've accomplished so far, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just real quickly, for tour Tuesdays, I think that's what they're calling it, right, Antonio?
Yes, yeah, yeah, they are.
Families are able to tour with, directly with the principal and, and Mr. Diaz, correct?
Yes, the principal and the vice principal there.
And the vice principal.
They're taking turns, I guess, but they, they do a formal tour every Tuesday morning for about 20 minutes, I think. Of course, they don't disturb the, the routine of the school, but they show as much as they can, and, and they've got good feedback from it.
Thank you.
And one more thing I'd like to mention, and Councilman Brady, having two students there, October 2nd is Kids Walk to School Day, and I would love to see a presence by Miami Shores Elementary students. It's just that it's hard to get it out there to the, to the student body effectively, and try to get as many kids walking and biking to school that day as possible. We do have a speeding problem on 103rd Street. There's nothing like having a big pedestrian presence on that street to get cars to take notice and slow down, and get the idea that this is a school zone that they're speeding through, so thank you.
Mr. LaFredo?
Madam Mayor to Madam Vice Mayor, do you think it would behoove us to ask the village manager to have a larger police presence on that day? I defer to you.
Yes, we traditionally have a police presence, yes.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the Chair to the Historic Preservation Board is present, Ms. Nina Corman. If you'd like to move to that particular item.
Sure. Hi, Nina. It's okay.
Good evening. My name is Nina Corman. Some of you know me, some of you don't. Hello to the new members of the council, Madam Mayor and Madam, oh, Mr. LaFredo, who's not that new. I am the Chairperson of the Historic Preservation Board. I am presenting this report of our accomplishments from October 2018 to July of 2019. And you have before you the papers I produced, which are basically kind of a cold rundown of what happened at our meetings. But I have a little talk, if you don't mind, just a few words about historic preservation, which some of you have heard multiple times from me, but why not one more time? Whether buildings, historic districts, sites, or objects, historic resources are indisputably of paramount importance. They're visible reminders of yesteryear, which connect us to history, the events and the stories which made us who we are. They bring a unique personality to the communities we live in, imbuing them with that indescribable sense of place, and giving residents something to be proud of. Ultimately, and perhaps most importantly, historic resources are irreplaceable. Their very existence helps all of us, and those who will follow us, to learn about the past and understand our small but important role in the grand scheme of time. That's the romantic view, which those of you who have been on the council have heard me spout before. The practical economic view, though, about historic preservation is also significant, and I'm usually not so into the practical part, but it is important. When speaking of historic resources, since the adoption of the 1966 National Historic Preservation Act, which got the ball rolling on local preservation programs throughout this country, numerous studies have been commissioned that irrefutably demonstrated the economic benefits of historic preservation to a community. Enhancing Paradise: The Impacts of Historic Preservation on Miami Dade County is one of those studies. That was undertaken in 2018 by Washington DC-based Urban Planning Forum. The firm reported that values of historic properties in Miami Dade County perform better during prosperous times, and did not suffer as much during eras of financial setbacks. And when their values did suffer, they bounced back more quickly than nonhistoric properties. We live in a rapidly changing metropolitan area that is one of the most exorbitant for home buyers, and it is the most expensive for renters. There's a lot of competition out there for housing stock, so now more than ever, it's incumbent upon us to show that we care about what's in our midst. I mention all of this as a preface to what's gone on with our board in the past two years. We hope to become very active, to do more than just rubber stamp projects of historic homeowners, but that was not meant to be. Instead of being granted some support and protecting and enhancing the unique quality of life in our village, we've had to battle a lot. There seems to have been a clear and concerted effort to not just impede the progress of historic preservation, but to actually deny the legitimacy of our list of 42 historically designated properties. We've been plied with numerous erroneous statements, such as the properties on our existing list need to be registered with the state, or they're not truly historic. That's absolutely not true. There's something called the Florida State Master File, which is a repository of historic properties throughout the state, but it's not required at all that they be registered on the historic, on the Florida Master Site File. Also, since some of our historic properties did not have a covenant recorded with the county at the time of their designation, they have been said to have not been truly historic. Another thing that's absolutely untrue, according to an attorney with the National Trust for Historic Preservation, those issues of a covenant being filed and a property being designated as historic or mutually exclusive. Since all the paperwork regarding the historic properties on our list seemed to have disappeared at one point, we had no evidence, apparently, that these properties were indeed historic. I spent a few Saturdays in the history room of our library and rifled through about 70 file folders full of information of all these properties, so again, you know, more statements that we were given and things that we've negated by just doing the work. We had four meetings this, this year, this two years or so. We didn't accomplish much after February, because we had been told time after time, you know, some of these statements, and finally, we were given a list of properties that were in the national register, but according to our liaison, they were not locally designated. So we split them up as a group, we all went out, looked at them, because this, these properties were nationally designated in the 80s and the 90s, so we were worried that perhaps they didn't qualify anymore, who knew what they looked like. So we all split up the properties, we took a look, we came back, we reconvened, and we were happy with what we found out. So we were sort of giving up the duties about researching the actual properties, and we were to return to another meeting. The next meeting we returned to was in February, we did not have a quorum. That was the last meeting we had. But unfortunately, I was going through the list on my own, and I found that many of those properties were already locally designated, so it felt like we had been sent on a wild goose chase. And that's basically what's been going on with our, our group. We've sort of been running around in circles, trying to accomplish things, but have been unable to leave the circle, unfortunately. So I leave you with that historic properties and historic resources are the soul of a community, and we hope to save our soul and keep it strong. Thank you. Questions? Questions?
Vice Mayor Birch?
Nina?
Yes.
Can you tell us why, was there an attempt to call a meeting after February, or was, do you think that the group needs to reconvene to reassess?
Well, in my case, I was extremely busy traveling in and out of town, and we have another member who we kind of had to schedule our meetings around his schedule as well because he's always in and out of the country. So, you know, there wasn't much interest after that, I think, you know. I got sort of deflated by what I found, and the other members weren't very forthcoming about getting together and trying to, you know, get the research done, and it's almost as if, you know, you're given an assignment, and then you're like, "Okay, I'll do it," but, you know, the completion didn't happen.
Sometimes in committees, boards and committees' regular meetings, when called, help to heal over and begin to refocus, so.
We were trying, but did not succeed unfortunately in the spring. Any other questions?
Do you, Madam Mayor? The board was very strong, and the historical preservation movement was very strong about 20 years ago, and it was almost like another code enforcement board because, but the values of the homes and the land was much less significant than it is now. I think, as you know, Miami Shores is one of the most expensive places to buy a house right now in Dade County, and some of these historic homes sit on large pieces of land. Do you have any thoughts on what your board can do to maintain its mission in the light of these new pressures for development?
Well, I'm very aware of what you're speaking about, about the pressures for development. I mean, one of the things that we would like to do is to continue to add to that list, to keep designating, and I understand the pressures of the smaller house on larger lot and the need to build larger in order to maximize the profit of that, but I mean, the maintenance of those properties, if you keep them up, can be as, almost as valuable as knocking them down and putting something larger up that is not as well-built. I mean, we have to realize that those are things that were built in a different way that can't be built the way they were built then, now, and there is something special about them, and that we want to maintain them as well as possible.
Yeah, I also note that some of these properties that were built in the 20s are coming up on being 100 years old now.
Yes, I know. Yeah, it's, you know, incumbent upon us to maintain them as best as possible because they truly do add value to this neighborhood. I mean, it's a lot of the reason why people moved here because of it. I mean, some, I tell people that I live in Miami Shores, that are in other counties even, they're like, "Oh, it's kind of like a junior Coral Gables." That's what they tell us, and I said, "Well, we're actually kind of better than Coral Gables now, I think." Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I noticed on your recommendations you make historic preservation a priority in this community. What, and what types of recommendations would you yourself make directly to the council to that would aid in your mission?
Making it a priority? Well, being a little bit more vocal about it, it's almost, I've been on the board for an eternity, it feels like now, and I know I'm being termed out now, it's over 10 years, and it's always felt as if, like Mr. LaFredo was saying, like a code enforcement board on a larger scale that is there just to bother people. You know, "We're here to put roadblocks in your way," and to maybe, we sort of have to dispel that notion that what we're doing here with these, you know, rules and regulations, which nobody ever likes rules and regulations, but it's important that they be met and adhered to, because they're doing nothing but helping your property stay stable or appreciate. It's not just done to make people annoyed and put roadblocks in their way, and, you know, "Oh, I want to paint my house brown." Well, no, I'm sorry, you can't do that. I mean, people look at it always, it seems, as if, "I don't want to buy a historic house because, and I'm going to have to go through all those rules and jump through hoops just to paint my house or change my windows," and I guess we have to, you know, change the perception and make people understand that this is really important for you to do. And we don't really put people through the wringer. I mean, we try as best as possible to try to make it easy for people and not annoy them, and, you know, make them come back multiple times, and the few times that I've been on the board and we have had people come back multiple times, it's for really good reason. It's not just for fun, or, you know, we're trying to put them through the wringer.
Just one last question, excuse my ignorance on this one, but where would someone in the village be able to go look and see what the local board has designated as historic property?
We have a list here, apparently, the clerk has a list, but I know that in the library, we have all of the files, basically, on every property that has been designated from the beginning of the historic preservation program in the village.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? Thank you, Nina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7A, Appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. This is a continuation of the September 3rd council meeting, where there were four council members who voted. There was a tie vote between John Camp and David Gerhardt. Both applicants are present and prepared to answer any questions you may have. Your ballots are located in the upper right-hand corner.
There ought to be some sort of perseverance award for these.
That's correct, that's correct. Would any of you gentlemen like to come to the podium and make a presentation?
John Camp, 1050 Northeast 96th Street. Feels a little bit like Groundhog Day. I've spoken before, all of you at least once, and some of you twice now on this. You've heard what I believe are my qualifications, I went through them in some detail last time we were here, and I emailed them out to individuals on the council. So, if you have any questions about any of the things in my background that I spoke about or wrote to about, I'm happy to answer those. There are two things that I failed to mention last time, both of which got some play here tonight. One was that I'm one of the founding members and longtime steering committee member of Miami Shores, the Community Learning Partnership of Greater Miami Shores, which is a public and private, a public independent parochial school consortium designed to share educational resources and opportunities, build community and social awareness among member schools. It started out as a Berry University project to provide continuing education to local educators and has bloomed into something much larger than that. As far as Edison, Archbishop Curly, Cushman, Miami Country Day, and now I understand North Miami Senior High is a potential member of the consortium. Unfortunately, Miami Shores Elementary and St. Rose are not, so if anyone is involved with either of those schools and would like to be involved, they should speak up. The second is that for a number of years, I served on a mayor's ad hoc committee to study ways to make Miami Shores more bike and pedestrian friendly. In fact, I was involved in the bike and pedestrian way planning that became part of the long-term mobility modality plan. I worked on that with councilperson, or Vice Mayor Birch, and others for a number of years, and we've seen a number of those things implemented, including the shared lanes that people see throughout the shores, and now this pedestrian and bike way, which I think is going to be a huge benefit. And the last thing I'll say is, Mr. LaFredo might have been on the board, the council at this time, years ago, when there was a discussion about a bike park, I mean, a dog park in the vacant lot in front of the fieldhouse, I came to speak in support of it and talked about what city planners call third places. Our first places are homes, and second places are places of work, and third places are things like coffee shops and recreation departments and libraries. And I will say that Brockway Library is one of the most significant third places that we have. I went back and looked at the board minutes, and the most recent minutes that are online are from May of 2019, and in those minutes, I noted that there were, at that time, 6,935 patrons of the library, which is an incredible number, we think of a village of 10,000 people. It's 70% of the village are members of the library, so it's obviously a hugely significant part of our community. I believe that for the reasons I've stated before, I would be an effective board member, and I'd appreciate your support.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Gerhardt?
I have a question.
Councilman Melz?
And actually, I wasn't forthright, it's more of a comment.
Okay.
And it actually goes to both you, Mr. Camp, and Mr. Gerhardt. I don't look forward to this vote, because somebody's going to win and somebody's going to lose, and I think the village loses actually, because I think you're both extremely qualified. So, in my time and here up on the dais here, this is the worst vote coming, and can't run out, I have to make a vote.
Don't, because we have to come back again next month.
Yeah, that's right, maybe we could do that. No, but here's the thing, and I get it, when somebody applies for something and they don't get it, and then maybe there's a sense of anger, or disdain, or something that you don't get it, and then you don't participate. But, you know, all our boards are open, right? Everybody can go, you can attend all the meetings, they're not closed, and I'm sure if you attend the meeting because you are committed and you have ideas, the board will listen to you. So, maybe you're not officially on the roster as a member, but you can have a huge impact to better both the board and the community. So, to either of you two fellows, who's going to be a sore loser, don't be a sore loser. And I'm just speaking open and frank.
Well, I appreciate that.
Because I just don't want one of you not to participate.
Well, I think, from what I've said before, I think it's apparent that I have participated with the library in a number of ways, even though I haven't been on the board previously, but I appreciate your comment.
Listen, I'm just putting it out there, you know, and I've never done this before, but I'm telling both of you, then whoever loses, I'd like to still see you participate.
Thanks.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gerhardt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you, Mr. Melz. If I don't get it, I promise you I won't be a sore loser. I'd be happy to, you know, get involved, and I'm glad that I could do that. Actually, I didn't really know that they were open to the public, so that would be, that would be great, and I've known John for probably 50 years or so, and so, I mean, he would make a good member, and I think I would as well. Again, I've been a member, I don't want to belabor it too much, but I've lived in Miami Shores for 50 years. In fact, my mom still lives in the house that I grew up in, she's 94 years old, so we have deep ties to the community. I've been going to the library for years. I agree with John, we have a real gem with a fantastic, a lot of participation with the library, and we have a fantastic asset in our community. And I've always been involved in the library, ever since I was a kid, I've always gone to the library, I go there all the time. At one point, my wife even worked at the library, so I think it's a great thing, I would love to be on it, and thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say I'm sorry to both of you that I wasn't here last time. I was really, really under the weather, didn't want to bring that to everybody here, but thank you for persisting, and I wish there were two openings.
The majority of the votes are in favor of Mr. John Camp.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Item 8A, Resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, authorizing the village manager to execute a local agency program known as LAP agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation. This item is sponsored by the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, as I indicated earlier in the discussion tonight, in order to complete the, or to get the funding from the Florida Department of Transportation... Mr. Seraphin's. The council needs to pass a resolution so that I can, I can complete the local agency program, the LAP agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation, so we can get our money for the multipurpose pathway for us, as has been mentioned several times tonight, from 111th Street to 103rd Street. And basically, in this project, the total project is, budgeted is $531,679, of which the DOT is going to kick in $454,393. Our share is $77,286, and that's going to come from our CITT fund, which is the half-cent transportation fund dollars that we get from Miami-Dade County. So, in order, like I said, in order for me to sign this, I'm going to need this resolution passed by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any comments?
You see, that this was, at the time, we were doing a lot of studies. This was when we were really glad that we had done the studies, because the multimodal mobility study was what enabled us to qualify for this grant, so it was really worthwhile, and it's continued to be so. So, I'm really proud to move this item, and thank you.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Item 9A, A Discussion and Possible Action Authorizing the Village Manager to Execute All Related Documents to Effectuate the Agreement Between Miami Shores Village and Kim Lee Horn for Professional Engineering Services for the Shores Estates Sewer Facility Plan. Per RFQ 2019-05-01, this item is sponsored by the village manager.
Thank you, Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, as part of the Competitive Negotiation Act, we had to go out to RFQ for a engineering firm to do the engineering services in the Shores Estates for their, for our sewer facility plan. You approved the ranking last meeting with Kim Lee Horn being ranked number one. Mr. Davis, myself, and Chris Miranda negotiated with them. We got them down to $40,000, which is the exact amount of money that we're getting via grant, so this will not cost the taxpayers any money for us to do this, and Kim Lee Horn, we've done a lot of business with them over the years, they're a fine company to do business with, and I recommend approval of this.
Thank you. I just want to say, great job on the negotiation, getting it down to 40, that's so we don't have to absorb that cost as taxpayers. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the, let's see, this is the, not a resolution, but a...
Authority to enter.
Authority to go ahead and enter into that contract.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Seraphin?
Before there's a second, I just want to make it clear, there is a contract in the package, but I haven't tweaked it yet, but the actual item is to give Mr. Benton authority to do what he needs to do to enter into a contract.
Great clarification, thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Item 9B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Current Year Legislative Agenda.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. So, it's that time again where we need to let our lobbying team know what our priorities are in Tallahassee. I put together a list of things here that I provided to you in a memorandum. One of the things that I did not put on there that, upon reflection, I should have, is the issue we have with vacation home rentals, and so I think that ought to be added back to the list. We had it on there last year, it didn't get any traction, but I think that it's something that we ought to have on there. Our team is in Tallahassee right now, attending some meetings there, so they couldn't be here tonight, but with your, again, vote of these, approval up or down of these different items, or adding anything you wish to add, I'll make sure that they get this list, and they will work on our behalf in order to secure funding or whatever else the council would like to do with these various items.
Comments from council? Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes, I've reviewed the Florida League's priority, legislative priority agenda, and I was impressed by one way they have for us to look at the bullet point of designing construction of sewer system and area, other areas of the village identified in the vulnerability study.
and also what we know we need, which are water projects. And I thought they put it very well, and I would, I would love to just add, um, this language into our request. The dedic-, uh, um, the establishment of a dedicated and recurring source of state funding to meet current and projected local government water supply and water infrastructure needs. Because that says it all, and it doesn't do it piecemeal. In two thousand and five, it goes on to say in this, there, up until two thousand and nine, there was a dedicated source of funding. And then, as we know, what happened in two thousand and nine, that funding was discontinued. So we haven't had a designated source of funding. So every municipality, along with us who, and we are a small one, we go and, and try to make our voice loud enough. Would it be better to rather have a dedicated source of funding? That the legislature says, we're going to put this into water and infrastructure projects from this day forward and fund it. And, and, um, I, I believe that that's the way to go here, and I'd love to add that as well as the short-term rentals concern.
I have a couple of comments to make. Um, but first, Mr. Manager, for my own edification, since I was not here previous, you said the issue with vacation home rentals. Can you get, give me some clarification on that, please?
Yes, ma'am. We have the, well, the Florida, let me back up. The Florida Legislature took away local government's ability to, through, that we used to have through our zoning codes, to regulate residents renting out their houses. So what we have is, uh, we have, in, in one particular neighborhood, we have four houses in a row, that they rent their houses out on a weekly basis. There's different people moving in. It's operated just like a motel, where somebody comes in on a, a, a Sunday afternoon. They stay there till the next Saturday afternoon. Somebody comes in, throws out the garbage, cleans the place up, and a new group of people come in. These folks oftentimes are from, uh, they're, they're from, um, European countries. They're here on vacation. They may be here for things like the boat show, for the art show, all kinds of different events that they come here for. But one thing they do come here for is to have fun because they're on vacation. Meanwhile, there's people next door that have to get up and go to work every morning. And so here's a crew coming in from South Beach at two o'clock in the morning that decides to have a kegger out there at the pool at two in the morning and party all night long. And so our police are about the only tool in the toolbag, other than us requiring certain, um, application forms and a permit fee. And we do, Mr. Seraphin did extensive research on this and came up with, um, uh, basically the, the, the minimum requirements that we could do without getting ourselves in trouble. In order to enforce these things, our residents are forced to call the police all the time. So our police are, are having to go out there and, and speak to these people. Oftentimes, they don't even realize they're doing something wrong. So they, they just realize they're on vacation. So our residents have been, have, have been vocal over the years, uh, coming here to the, to the podium. They've been talking to our state reps. They've come to my office. And I'm sure that people here on the dais that have been here a while know who I'm talking about, but, um, it is an issue in our community, and we're finding more and more of these things popping up.
So what's the specific ask?
I think, I think the specific ask is that we ask the legislature to grant us authority to regulate our, our own zoning code again.
Restore. We're, we're looking at, at one point, we had the ability to completely enforce our single-family home restrictions. Motels go in motel zones, single-family homes stay in single-family home zones. But the legislature preempted certain types of regulations. We cannot prohibit vacation rentals. We can regulate within certain very narrow frameworks. But we can't prohibit, we can't regulate the frequency. We can't say, you can do it four weeks out of the year, but no more. Or you can do it for thirty days, uh, but not shorter.
And this is a state regulation. It's statewide.
This is the Florida Legislature. No one's life, liberty, or property is safe when the Florida Legislature is in session.
There's two words, frequency and duration.
Right.
That we need to get back in there that would help us, and they took that ability away from us.
And we're, we're not alone, uh, in, in this. There, cities all over the state are experiencing it as bad or worse as we are, and are very active in, in trying to get back some degree of control. And it ties in with what's in Tom's memo about home rule. This is just one of a series of things where the legislature has decided that Tallahassee knows better about what should happen in our neighborhoods than we do, or than you do.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Birch?
Uh, so I was just going to add that, that when the league came out about short-term rentals, they said they supported local, uh, legislation that restored local zoning authority and opposed legislation that preempts municipal authority in, in, um, any way. And one of the interesting things I read was even the cities who had short-term rental ordinances prior to two thousand and eleven, which was grandfathered in, they're having difficulty now because things have changed since two thousand and eleven, and they're afraid to go forward with a change because of this preemption of, um, municipal authority. So I think it's important for us to
Okay, thank you. I, I have a couple of other questions, Mr. Manager, with regard to the legislative agenda. And I think you might have just answered it, but these seem to be vague. When you go back in and we meet with our lobbyists, as I've done in my previous life, um, do you, do, do you comment on specifics? For example, and this is my, just thinking through this stuff, I find that when you're coming in with more specific requests, you tend to get funded, hopefully. Uh, there's a better chance. So for example, with Dr. Charter, you have here additional funding for Dr. Charter's school operations and capital. That's fine. But do you give thought to and/or do we specifically state, um, in speaking with Dr. Charter, looking for school resource officer funding, school hardening funding, fencing, appropriation of dollars for safety issues? Are you more specific in your request in this blanket statement?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Then
And I, and I would discuss this with Dr. Andrews as well.
Beforehand. So before you sat before our lobbyists and made these requests, you would come back to us with your specifics or meet with us individual? How would we know what specific request you're asking for from our lobbyists?
Well, again, I would take, I would take this list, for example, I, I can do that certainly. Uh, the, the Dr. Charter School operations, I know one of the things is the, the, uh, funding for police officer. So we would, we would figure out the, the, the cost. I would let our lobbyists know, look, this is, this is what we need. We need this dollar amount, and they would then sub- submit that on our behalf. Dr. Andrews may have a specific capital need that she needs for the school. Usually what it is, is the, when it, when it comes to charter schools, is there's a whole consortium, if you will, of charter schools, and they're looking to, um, in- increase their part, uh, piece of the, of the pie from the local, um, school board district. And so that's kind of how those things evolve.
Yeah, I, I understand. Um, a couple of other questions. Um, have we spoken with the police department? I know that the Criminal Justice Committee up there has some appropriations. I know that they need some things for their facilities. Have, is that something we can address as well in our priorities? And, um, I know that there are also some appropriations that are available to seniors. There's senior programming appropriations that we could be looking at, and I don't know if that had been done in the past or if that's something we've considered. Both of those things.
We have not done it in the past. Um, it's certainly something we can add. There are senior, senior appropriations for
Programming for seniors, uh, programs, programming, and there, there are a litany of things that fall under that. I know the Crim Justice, uh, Group has appropriation money. If there is something that our police department should or would need, I think we should be advocating for them. I, they're building, uh, after touring, they're building, there may be some items we can help them with. I'm just trying to figure out, I, I like what you have here, and I think all of them are good priorities, but I'm just trying to figure out how you come to decide which priorities we ask for and how specifically you go. That's why I ask these questions. Mr. Seraphin? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lefredo.
Yeah, at the risk of being a little too far ahead of the game, I still think that this is something that should be put on the agenda at some point. And you know, I brought it up in the, in the campaign, where I thought that at some point, we should get South Florida Water Management District to move the, the dam from the golf course to the end of the Biscayne Canal as a flood control measure. I think that if we had our representatives ask the state legislature that now, they'd be laughed out of the room. However, I still think that we ought to put something in our people to find out from the water management districts what they're doing in a long-term plan to combat sea level rise through the use of their facilities. Because they're the only ones that actually have facilities at the present time in the state that can do something about sea level rise. I don't know how we would put that in there. I think it would be more, not a funding request, but an informational request to see what could be done.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes. Through the, through the mayor, I, I just wanted to, in that regard, then draw your attention to the latter part of the packet and, um, Mr. Benton's memo of what he attended. This is actually a county project, and what the county is doing is following through on what is called the Arch Creek Basin Study. And if you look carefully at this, um, Mr. Lefredo, they are not suggesting moving the dam. They're suggesting strengthening the dam with what they call surge protection, uh, device. And further, they're suggesting a wall along, uh, the area that, that goes to either side of the C eight canal. So, um, a great deal of funding and grant money has gone into what these engineers have come up with for this particular area of the county. What they call the Arch Creek Basin is part of the golf course in north of us. And one of the reasons it was part of the study is because of the demographics. The area through there, uh, has, has homes that are much older, and the area is, um, economically challenged for making these kinds of changes. So it became a target. So that's the suggestion that's already, um, going forward through the county for the dam.
This is the dam on the Arch Creek?
This is the dam on the C eight canal, the Biscayne Canal, the dam you're referring to.
I'm sorry I didn't see that. I wouldn't. I, I have nothing good to say about that, but I understand that they're concerned about pressures from the boating community. Because anything, moving any of those dams affects homeowners and affects boating rights. I understand that's what's going to be the rub twenty years from now or ten years from now, when we're all using canoes to get to work. However, I think that we should at least make some inquiries. That's all I'm saying. If the council doesn't want to do it, then we'll let it go.
Mr. Lefredo, I, I, having been involved in this when I was mayor and understanding the amount of work that's gone into this idea, and knowing that it is totally in the planning phases, and Mr. Benton has asked very important cogent questions, I, I would not be in favor of suggesting to the legislature that they fund moving the dam.
You understand that at some point, and I'm not going to take this any further, but at some point, everything downstream of the dam is going to get flooded.
I, I, I've seen, I've seen the, the, the very, there, there are many, uh, computerized models that show exactly what you're talking about, and I understand that, yeah.
Thank you.
A few, a couple of more comments. Thank you. Have we ever partnered with similarly situated municipalities to go after parts of our legislative agenda? That's one question. Two, um, do we ever, and maybe Vice Mayor Birch has more insight on this, do we ever look at what the Miami-Dade League of Cities is going after and partner with them as well? Or have we formed any partnerships when we're going after our legislative agenda items? That's my question.
The short answer is no with our, with our neighboring municipalities. The, um, I know our, our lobbying team works
It's you.
It's my mic. I know, it's my mic doing this. Our I know our lobbying, lobbying team works very closely with the Florida League. I get calls from the league that, that they've been in communication. I know that, that our team works very closely with our, with our, um, state representatives. So I, I, I know there is some communication now. Do we sit down with Biscayne Park or North Miami or El Portel? No, we, we do not. Um, we haven't in the past.
The reason I ask that is because some of these larger projects, a lot of our surrounding communities are going to have to be thinking about and meeting with the state legislature on, for example, the sea level rise issue. It's not just our issue. It's, it's surrounding municipalities join it, join us in that issue. And I just wonder if there's more power in numbers. That's why I asked the question.
And, and again, if, if I may, so, you know, this, this issue of, of the septic-to-sewer conversions, the previous council asked me to write to the, to the Dade League, which I did. Um, I wrote to their executive director. I've spoken to them numerous times. I've asked them to move that forward and get it out of committee, and it is not. It's just, for whatever reason, they're, they have no appetite to address that issue. And as I said, I think this, and you've just said, I mean, this is a very important topic, but so that's how politics come into play for whatever reason, which is why we've gone, uh, gone alone and said, all right, look, we're, you know, this is what we need. This is what our residents need. We've, we've gone out and, and done it.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes, um, Mayor Weiger, this is where, um, we had, you know, uh, in the last few meetings that I went to of the Dade League, I was trying, I was trying to say there are seven cities on here out of thirty-six municipalities that are largely on septic tanks. And a septic-to-sewer conversion with a county-run sewer system is probably going to happen, uh, better and faster if we all cooperate together and ask for that. And I was hoping that, I, I believe that you're the Dade League person, and I know that, that you seem to have some contacts there. So I, I'm still hoping that that co- coalition could happen, uh, as part of their a- agenda in the coming year.
Thank you, because that's, that's, thank you. That, that's helpful, because it was brought up at the last meeting, and I'm happy to, you know, with, along with the manager and report back. But I think, I think we can get more bang for our buck if we are, have a collective effort on this. We're a great municipality. We're a smaller municipality, and, and there are a lot of folks out there with the same issue. So that's why I think, that's why I asked this question. And that's why I think it's important to sometimes not go solo. But let me do some research and certainly follow up. Um, the last thing I'll say about this, um, it looks good. Like I said, Mr. Manager, I just, I have some concerns about specificity and from my own personal prior experience, having worked in government, when these legislative priorities come out, it's usually there's usually a longer process in establishing these. Now, I haven't been here. I'm in the first few months here, so I understand that. But there's just usually a little bit more detail, a little bit more talking through these issues and determining what's a priority. I do think all these things are priorities. Um, I just want to be mindful that we have lobbyists who represent our ish, our, our, our village, and I want to make sure when we are utilizing those lobbyists whom we pay, that we're getting the best bang for our buck. And I'm not suggesting they're not doing our job and their job. What I am suggesting is if we sometimes make our requests a lot more nuanced in advance, we could be lobbying for them before the state legislature even starts. Just, just been my experience and just a thought.
Uh, you're absolutely correct, which is why it's on the agenda tonight, and so we can get, you know, we can take these ideas and I can refine them down for you.
Okay, and then we'll see them again before they head up?
Sure, I can do that.
All right, I don't have anything. I do have a question for the attorney. How do we move on? There's been so many different iterations.
I, I think, I mean, Tom, you feel comfortable that you've know the consensus?
I know the consensus.
And you'll bring it back anyway? And I, I think what Tom was trying to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we put out the ideas, you all kick it around. When it starts to narrow down to specific asks, Tom, working with the lobbyists, uh, make it a lot more specific than, oh, give us money for sewers.
No, I under, I, I understand that.
Oh, I know you do. I'm just putting it out there.
Right. I just know that they're up in Tallahassee now, and perhaps you get a jumpstart on this stuff.
Yeah.
You have a better chance.
And as the process evolves, I, I meet with them on a regular basis, and they will come to me and say, look, you, you asked for something on, on the, uh, I'll just use a charter school, for example. And they, they've read the tea leaves up there and say, look, that's dead on arrival. I'll be happy to do it for you, but we're wasting our time. You have more of a chance going here. You have more of a chance going here for this particular issue over here. And the other thing that I'm advised for forever, for years, is that, you know, make it very specific, as you said, very specific, but don't ask for everything in the kitchen sink. Focus on a couple of projects that are really important to you, and that's what we've done in the past. And like I said, we got the traffic calming to the desk of the governor for the first time in a long time, so, you know, that's like the most progress we've made in a long time.
And so, my last question would be, we did get that money, and then it got vetoed. Prior to that, what was, what was the last funding that we did receive from the state through our lobbyists? How long ago was that? Or do we know?
A long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
My point.
It keeps getting vetoed somewhere along the line, or traded in the mix, or...
So, excuse me one moment, Vice Mayor Birch, I guess, I guess, maybe I'm not articulating myself. I think my concern is, if we sit down and have these meaningful conversations with the lobbyists that we pay, there are low-hanging fruit items that they're aware of, and so are state legislatures. And maybe, you know, we have our wish list, but we should also be looking for some low-hanging fruit that we can make happen for our village. I mean, we should be asking those questions as well.
Anything we can get, I ask every year. Bring me money. That's my, that's my number-one thing, is show me something, bring me some money. But I'll come back with you with specifics on this list.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9C, discussion and possible action regarding solar panels for village halls. This item is sponsored by the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
I'm going to use this microphone over here. Seems like mine's the defective one here. So, I believe Mr. Melz has had asked quite some time ago for staff to come back and do some research on solar panels for the roof of village hall here. And I provided you with some basic information here on what the solar panels would cost. I have a, we reached out to a local contractor that's, that actually is here in the village. They were gracious enough to provide us with some numbers. There's a photo here where you can see the, it's kind of hard to see, but you'll see the panels positioned on the roof here. And essentially, they came back and they said that this would pay for itself in about 13 years. In my memo to you, I took exception to that, because one of their things that they included was a 5% rate increase every year to FPL, which in 13 years, that's 65% rate increase. And that's like, you know, no offense to anybody, but that's not going to happen. So, I guesstimated that somewhere we will, based on the cost, which is approximately $250,000 to install the panels on this building, that the payback time would be about 20 years. Now, one of the big things here is that you're reducing the carbon footprint. It's about 82 metric tons a year that you would be saving. The other thing that I, that I brought to the council's attention in my memo is the condition of the roof here on village hall. This roof is well over 20 years old, it's got leaks in certain areas now that we've just patched. So, you actually need a, I would highly recommend if and when we do this, that we do a roof at the same time. It just makes no sense putting solar panels on the entire roof here, on an old roof where they've got to be taken off and a new roof put back on. And I also recommended that we seriously look at a standing seam metal roof, because it's much easier to install the solar panels on, and I think Mr. Brady can attest to that, that's what he has at his house, and there's less penetration in the roof membrane by doing it that way. So, those are just some of the, some of the takeaways, if you will, from the research that we did, and we'll best answer any questions you may have.
Vice Mayor Birch?
So, when I considered this item, I thought how great it is for us to, for us as a council and as a municipality to show the way to our residents how important conversion to solar is. And I, you know, a few years ago, we sponsored at the community center a workshop on solar. It was through the Solar Co-op. It was an excellent chance for our residents to get educated about it, and in fact, many of the solar roofs that came out of that co-op are up on our roofs now. And so, I understand and endorse the importance of a demonstration project, a new roof for village hall. But then, I think it's incumbent upon us to prioritize our finances in such a way that we take into account that reducing our carbon footprint is important, but then so are some of the projects that we already have in the pipeline that we want to be able to continue to fund for sustainability. To me, that is the important priority now. But in order to study this, I really began to think about the finances. We have not collected $3.5 million from FEMA yet. We have the motel consideration coming up, so that's on the income side. On the expense side, I noted with interest what staff put together for the budget capital. And in, and they started setting aside money for the flat roof of village hall, but not the entire roof. So, they started a set aside that in 2020 is $55,000, 2021 $50,000, and 2022 $50,000, for a total of $155,000 for the roof. So, they knew the flat roof was in trouble, but, you know, if you're sitting here with buckets all the time, then that would be one thing, but it doesn't seem that way. So, to jump into an entire whole roof so that we would enable the solar panels, I wonder then if that's the proper priority for our funding? Or perhaps, we could save some carbon footprint by replacing the really ancient three air-conditioning units that cool this building. So, I noted with interest that there was a WLRN segment on what the county is doing to try to lower the carbon footprint of commercial buildings, and they started with the morgue, because the morgue has so many super-chilled locations in it. And to make those units more efficient, they actually did a great improvement to their carbon footprint. So, that's what made me think of it. It's not that I really want this to happen, and that staff hasn't done a great job putting together a good package, but we already just voted $1 million for our pool, which was a necessity that we thought of at the time as a necessity, and we need to move on to these other priorities, in my view. All right, I'm done.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Lefredo?
When I first saw this, because I was telling the attorney, I read all this stuff online when the clerk sends it out on Thursday, and the first thing I said to myself was, no, never, that's too much money. That was my gut reaction. But then, I thought about it, and I more or less share the vice mayor's views in terms of priorities. But these are just some, and I, just some thoughts that I have as I was sitting here going through the whole agenda tonight, so they're fresh. But one of the things we need to be thinking about doing, because I was looking back at this memo, which I missed, and I apologize, when they're going to do that surge protection, they're going to bastardize the golf course to do it. They're going to seriously damage the golf course. And any surge that comes up that canal is going to flood shores of states, the underprivileged area, and the apartments in the east side. So, it's insane what they're planning. But anyway, there's a learning curve in developing the new economy and the new situation as we're changing. So, by doing this project, I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, but it's not so much reducing our carbon footprint as learning how to function using solar power. Learning how to use solar power on a daily basis, because I believe 10, 15 years from now, I won't be here, but 10, 15 years from now, we're going to be using a lot more solar power. So, why not start developing the community knowledge on how to use these things, how to repair them, how to function with them, how to share them with the grid, and all those kinds of things? And this is a big enough project that it might bear further study or further interest on our part.
Mr. Melz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, we boast that we are a progressive community, and we care about the environment, and we want to lead by example, but if you want to, you know, talk the talk, you have to walk the walk. Yeah, something costs money, it does. But if not now, then when? And can't you make this the focus, the focal point of the community? Nothing more important than your village hall. Set the example for the residents, and hopefully more people like Councilman Brady will put this and invest in their properties if they see that we're doing it for the community, and they will put it on their homes, and it will multiply and multiply. I mean, what's the answer, right? More fossil fuels, more electricity? We have to start sometime. And what's the objection? The money? Well, that's the objection with everything we do, right? But if the, if the forecast show that this is money which is going to come back to us, so whether it's 15 years or 20 years, there won't be a cost to this, then that's very different than money we're spending on other projects which isn't coming back to us. And I do want to take a second, and I want to thank Mr. Kendall for all the work he did here, and I know you're under the weather, we should have moved this to the beginning of the agenda, and we'll be more careful in the future for that. But do you see what I'm trying to get at here? Is that, you know, we're supposed to lead this community, and if we are really focused on the environment, and we always say we are, and most of us have run on that in our campaigns, what are you going to do about it? Just talk, right? We have to pick a project. I would pick a project of a grand stature, something which won't cost us money in the future. Now, I say all that because I'm in favor of this project, but I'm not in favor of it right now. What I want to do, it's premature, because funding, right? I don't think we need to float a loan for this. I don't think that's the appropriate, although I have all the confidence in the world you'd get a great rate, but I don't think that's the way to do it. I have a strong feeling that the village is going to come into a large sum of money soon as a result of excellent legal work and just commitment by our administration. I think what we should do when that comes in is revisit this and make a strong statement investing in our residents, in our future, and to lead the charge into caring about the environment. So, what I'm saying is, table this to January, okay? Take the pulse of the community and see where we're at. But I think it needs to be done. And if you're not going to do it to your village hall, where are you going to do it? Right? And what are you going to do? And with all due respect, yes, air conditioning does make a difference, but not enough. And the last thing I would like to note, what is, what is our life of this roof? Anybody want to jump up on that, Mr. Kendall, Mr. Benton?
Yeah, I wouldn't jump up on the roof.
I say, as Vice Mayor Birch had said, we're, we have $50,000, $50,000, $50,000. Is that realistic, that the roof can be fixed in three calendar or fiscal years?
No, what that would be, you have to do it all at once. What we do is, we would plan, we plan in our capital budget, and we put money aside...
For a three-year project?
Exactly, and then at the end of three years, then we go ahead and we do it.
Okay.
So, that's how we do that.
So, again, if we're going to do it, we need to do the roof. So, that's something that's going to add to the cost, and that's not coming back to us with the savings in electricity. But again, it doesn't change my recommendation, is to put this into the second meeting in January and to see where we are at that point.
So, motion to table?
I'd like to hear what the mayor has to say. I don't want to make a motion at this point.
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Brady, yes.
So, I actually completely agree with Councilman Melz. I think it's something that's important that we wanted, that we need to do, but I, you know, I think we need to have a better grasp of the situation for moving forward. And one of the things I was going to recommend is that we look at getting this into, you know, a future capital budget, and my understanding is that, you know, the roof is close to end of life, and I'm not, I have not run the numbers, but I'm sure there's an insurance benefit to standing seam metal roof, you know, for the village, but in addition, a safety benefit for the staff that have to be here during the, you know, event of a hurricane, you know, looking out for the village. But I would completely agree with Councilman Melz's idea to table this until January and to reevaluate the situation, but I think this is a very exciting proposal, and I really appreciate the time that was put into it, and I'm hoping that there is a way the village can stand as a good example, you know, both in a political, you know, demonstration sense, but also it's a very practical move for the village.
Thank you. Any other comments? No. Mr. Melz?
If there's no other comments, then I move to table this to the second meeting in January.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
There are vacancies on the planning board, historic preservation board, fine arts commission, recreation advisory committee, country club advisory board, general employee pension board, and personnel appeals board. Applications can be found on the village website and the village clerk's office. The deadline to submit applications is this Friday, September 20th, 2019. Miami Shores Kids Day Off, September 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Flipper Cinema will be showing the abominable prices are $45 per resident, $55 for non-residents. If you have any questions, call 305-758-6701. The next village council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, beginning at 6:30 p.m. in village hall council chambers. And the artisan fair at Brockway Memorial Library will be held on Saturday, October 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Shop beautiful, one-of-a-kind handmade items and homemade treats from local artisans. The admission is free. And would you rather receive the newsletter via email? Residents can sign up to receive the monthly newsletter by email. Simply contact us, clicking the Contact Us link on the front page of our website. Be sure your email includes your name and mailing address. The communications specialist will take care of the rest. And please remember to visit the village website for more information on village events, departments, and to receive agenda notifications. Village council comments?
Mr. Lefredo, shall we start with you this evening?
Yes, I want to thank the council for their patience and tolerance of me and these issues tonight. I've probably done an excellent job going through everything. The other thing I want to mention...
The other thing I want to mention is I did see the full-page ad put in the paper by the village of Biscayne Park. The mileage rate troubled me. I recommend it to you all, and I just want to know, there's really nothing to say, other than I just think we should stand ready to be of assistance to them if, in the future, they need it.
Thank you. Councilman Brady?
I just want to say it was good to be back, and I definitely agree with Councilman Lefredo. A lot of great discussion tonight. You know, thank you all, and I really appreciate the discussion about how we would approach, you know, our legislators in Tallahassee, you know, for maximum effectiveness. And the only other thing I would mention is that if anybody is interested in seeing more about, like, residential solar, you know, how it works, what it looks like, what my experience has been, please reach out to me, and my contact information's on the village website, but also to, you know, any other members of the council. If you, you know, want to come by and not discuss any council business, but simply see, you know, what it's like, and if it's something that you might be appropriate for your own, please do reach out. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Oh, yes, I wanted to remind everyone about Walk to School Day. It's October 2nd, so it's the day after our next meeting, but to me, it's an important thing to get your students understanding about walking and biking safely in this day and age. And it takes frequency of reminding and teaching, and that's why we have our police department involved in that time. So, if you are associated with a school, I would appreciate it if you would promote it. And the other thing that I wanted to mention from the village hall news is the Police Explorers Program. You know, over last year and the year before, we had this terrific Police Explorers Program, and you were greeted by these young people as you came into council meetings, and they were present at Plaza 98, they helped wherever they could, but they learned a lot. And so, if you know of any youth who are interested, it's for students ages 14 to 21, and we have one of our officers who's dedicated to running that program. It's an excellent one, so I'd love to see a lot of youth involved in that. And thank you, everyone, for listening to me on, tonight, on some of these things. I'm really excited about working together... really excited about working together and the way we're moving forward. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilman Meltz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three things. Number one, if you are traveling southbound on I-95 next week, please be aware, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday night, all lanes will be closed. All lanes will be closed, 10:00 p.m. to 5:30 a.m. If you're traveling northbound on I-95 next Wednesday, well, I'm sorry, this is the 25th through October 1st, all of them are going to be closed from 10:00 p.m. to 5:30 a.m. So just check on it, is what I'm trying to tell you, because nothing's worse than trying to get somewhere and you can't. And I think you just need to be aware of that. That's number one. Number two, I have organized a self-defense class for young women, teenagers. It's going to be held on Saturday, September 28th, from, I think it's 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Nominal cost, if you know anybody who would be interested, you can reach out to me, I'll give you the details. I'm not teaching it. But a local self-defense or martial arts studio had put something together for a way for young women to be able to defend themselves against unwanted advances, which I think is very topical and important these days. So please reach out. Last but not least, if you haven't been living under a rock, you realize that there's been some developments with regard to plastic reduction. And a lot of people are disappointed that, that it appears most municipalities are not going to be, right now, able to regulate plastic bags, single-use, or other plastics in their community. However, that's a general statement. I am interested in moving forward some legislation, and the village attorney and his staff, bless you, have always been helpful, that I believe legally, we are still able to control it on our village property. So as I had mentioned before, I would want our community to trailblaze and to lead against single-use plastics. I think we are close to be, or we are able, and if the council will consider it, able to ban those plastics on our property, which I think will make a bold statement and encourage our residents to move forward with that regard, and maybe show the rest of the state that it is possible to be responsible and to protect your community. So that's going to be forthcoming for you all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things. One date of note, on September 25th, Miami Shores will be hosting the Miami Dade County Commission for Women Meeting. And it'll be here in Miami Shores at the, I'm going to give you the address, at the, right here at the 9900 Building, at 6:00 p.m. And we'd love to have you join us. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. But it's the county's initiative, but they're hosting the meeting here in our city, and we're pretty excited about it. So hopefully, people will come out and join us at that meeting. I want to congratulate, again, Miami Shores Elementary on going up to a B-school. I can't say it enough. I think that's important, and it should be out there. And we're very proud of the efforts that are going forward with that school. The village announcements. We hired a communications person. I feel like these are the things that our communications person should be putting out, so that, and I'm not saying this person is or is not, but I'm looking at Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, should be going out, letting our residents know. Likewise, I'm hopeful that we'll get an update on the status of our website. It's not very good, and it's outdated. And I've been looking around at other municipalities in our county. I would love to see the update come to its conclusion. So I'd love to see our communications person getting the word out on all the wonderful things that are happening here in Miami Shores. And I would love to, one day, get an update on how the website is coming. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Are there any other comments? Okay, there being no, there being no further business before the council, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.